Just like to have a moment of silence for all the people that are missing mothers, missing fathers, relatives at this time of the year. Just let everybody know that there's somebody that loves them. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. In the unlikely event that there is an emergency, please exit either through the back doors and outside or through the side doors and down through the stairs to the left. Roll call, please, Leslie.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Brocoulio?
Present.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Mrs. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Gauss?
Here.
Mrs. Kiner?
Here.
Mr. Coburn?
Here.
Mrs. McGuire Bruce?
Here.
Board Chair Pickett?
Here.
All right. Board guests, Mr. Macchio, would you like to invite our first guest up?
I think you know your first guest very well, actually. So our first guest is going to be John Daig. He's going to come up. And each year, we are required to complete an indoor air quality assessment, and we need to report the findings to the board. This is one of the items that we wanted to make sure that we had taken care of as we continue to be hopeful and optimistic over a pre-referendum work that's happening. Because one of the many questions on the state construction grant is that we have this item completed. So, Mr. Daig, thank you very much for all the time, effort, and energy you spent going through every one of our schools. And he's going to take you through just sort of the overall findings.
Sure. So, very quickly, as you've said, this is an annual requirement. It's part of Connecticut state law. Every year, we do six walkthrough inspections of our schools. We do this with, I do it with, a school principal and the school custodian or representative from Buildings and Grounds. There's six checklists that we have to go through in each building. The ventilation checklists are still pending. Those are going to, I'll get to that in a little bit. In our prior year, we had reported out that we had done our HVAC inspections. Those were completed by a consultant, and we are beginning a new five-year cycle for those. None were completed this year. This is the public communication of the findings. All documents can be seen on the district website. If you look at the Enfield Schools, you go to the District Info, there'll be a notifications tab, and you can look and find them in indoor air quality and HVAC inspections there. And then individual school websites have them posted for their school. If you go to About Us, there'll be an Indoor Air Quality tab, and you can find the inspection results there. So, there was no HVAC assessment scheduled for this year. Buildings and Grounds is currently contracting with Fussin O'Neil to do some of the ventilation checklists. Some of that work is difficult to complete during the school year. They have to open up each of the unit ventilators, systems in the schools, check components, check freeze stats, so on. So it takes a little bit of while. That work is still ongoing. In '24, when I reported out, there was a prioritized list of equipment that needed service and maintenance. B&amp;G has been working on that. They're refining their preventative maintenance program to make sure that there's fewer issues in the future. Buildings and Grounds posted signs. We needed anti-idling signs, which were identified last year. Those are posted at all of the schools. And the traffic pattern at Crandall changed. If you remember, they used to drive around the building. That pattern changed for two reasons. One was cited on indoor air quality assessment. The other was the damage to the fire lane around the school. The findings from this year, there was overall improvement in our air quality assessments from 2024. We have an improved assessment in '25. Some of the issues that still persist are stained ceiling tiles. This happens to be as a result of some of the buildings have older roofs and have sometimes periodic leaks. There was still some from the Enfield High School when they had the air conditioning incident or when it malfunctioned a few summers ago. They've been repaired, but some of them were still visible. We found some minor leaks in fixtures, like teachers hadn't noticed minor leaks under their sinks in their classrooms. So those were called out, service tickets put in. And there was things like missing maps in the integrated pest management binders. And that's an easy fix. So again, overall improvement on those. Our next steps with this, we're at continuous staff communication. If you've been a teacher, or you'll get usually a notification before the holiday break to do things like clear away furniture or items from front of your unit ventilators, leave the classroom in good condition, don't bring air fresheners or furniture or other items back with you from vacation. We'll send out that annual notification again before the break. We're working with facilities on scheduling preventative maintenance and making sure there's a schedule for the building so that they can get cleaned and the units can get maintained appropriately over the summer. And we will be back or provide a summary report when the ventilation checklists are final and we have the report from the consultant. All right. Are there any questions on our annual indoor air quality assessments?
Thank you, Mr. Daig. I will open it up for questions. Ms. Brocoulio?
We serve students first, and more than half of our student population qualifies for free and reduced lunch, according to our current enrollment data, an indicator of the economic challenges that many of our families face. Research, including from the National Institutes of Health, consistently show that children in low-income rental housing and those receiving governmental housing support experience significantly higher rates of asthma because of environmental conditions in the home, things such as mold, pests, moisture, and inadequate ventilation. My concern is that many of our students are likely already navigating compromised air quality at home and then may encounter similar air quality issues in our school buildings. When students face respiratory triggers in both environments, the effects can become cumulative: increased asthma attacks, more emergency room visits, chronic absenteeism, and reduced classroom engagement. All of these work directly against our mission to provide a safe, healthy, and supportive learning environment. To truly serve students first, we must address, obviously, the building conditions. That may be intensifying the health challenges for our most vulnerable students. And so my questions are, I know you mentioned the IACU findings from 2024 and improvements that are going to be made. When I was looking at some of the reports from last year, I saw that the 2024 report noted that Enfield Street School had an insufficient amount of fresh air in the cafetorium and recommended the installation of rooftop units. I was just wondering how can I, or any community member that's concerned about the air quality, can we view the status of those recommended updates and see, like, when they're being completed?
So I think those would be completed as part of a comprehensive school building project. Installing an RT, or rooftop unit, or dedicated outdoor air system as a renovation to that building would require roof penetrations and so on. We had separate assessments in there, and there was air quality assessment measuring CO2, you know, humidity, microbial within the schools as part of some work that Russell and Dossett had done in '23, '24 school year. In those, we weren't finding real evidence of microbial growth. There was a small incident at Barnard for a rug. There was something with JFK near a water fountain, but those were resolved. I think, yes, the buildings could have significantly improved HVAC within the schools, but I think it's probably best addressed through a comprehensive building project as opposed to taking and putting in systems into a building that may, with the work of the PreRef Committee, be, become redundant within a few years.
And then I was wondering through the chairs, is it possible that we address some questions in joint facilities as well? Including the overall improvements with the severity of the dust on the grills in each building and things like that.
So, thank you, Ms. Brocoulio. And I think there's some conversation that we'll be having through pre-referendum and joint facilities around some of our long-term plans and some immediate pieces I was going to share, and I'll just share it now. I think there's some continued collaboration between Buildings and Grounds and just need to acknowledge some capacity constraints and ways that we're working together to address some of those. But I think those concerns can be raised in joint facilities.
And I think, you know, this is one of the things that might not be fair with these assessments. We're completing these, and you're seeing things like dust on the grill right before the holiday break, which is one of the major service areas when they go in and actually do clean those. So doing the assessment in December, when you already have several months of buildup, the buildings usually get a thorough, kind of deep cleaning. They're doing the filter maintenance and so on while the students aren't in the, in the school buildings themselves.
Ms. McGuire Bruce?
Thank you for this information. I think all of us that are sitting up here see the need for the school modernization plan for our elementary schools. We have urgent, a real urgent need to update these buildings, whatever that may look like based on the committee's final recommendations. My hope, of course, is for a future referendum to pass. However, while we certainly don't want to throw money away, we also need to make sure that we're making the necessary updates to keep our students healthy and safe. We've had buckets in the hallways. Last year, we had students move from one classroom to another. Today, at our Connecticut Association of Board of Education training, a speaker kind of struck a chord with some of us about, she said, "Providing healthy and safe environments is very important. Be careful when striking down the facilities line item in your budget." I think unfortunately, deferring maintenance leads to bigger costs later. I think we're living proof of that. So while we're years away from brand-new schools or, you know, re-modernized schools, I think our job is still to educate students in an environment that is safe and comfortable. And ultimately, that's our responsibility. So I want to make sure that we're making decisions that support students, not only for the future, but also today. So I just want to note that as well.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Coburn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a quick question. I think Ms. Brocoulio kind of touched on it, and I know Mr. Daig answered some of, like, maybe the long-term stuff. But can you just touch up, you know, like reviewing the summary, maybe like, so where does it go from here? And like, what are the short-term fixes? Like, you know, obviously, dust on the grills, you know, that gets addressed during the winter break. Obviously, some of the ceiling tiles being wet and stained, like, is that something that gets communicated to Buildings and Grounds and gets swapped out? Or just like some of that stuff?
So, I probably could have a better job explaining this. So when you go through, so afterwards, I'd go back. And this year, we have a system within UNIS where we're putting in service requests into a system, and then Buildings and Grounds gets records of that. So last year, when we did it, you know, Buildings and Grounds was going through and making a list for the custodian to go through. So this year, if we noticed a leak under a sink, if we noticed a, actually, like, wet ceiling tile in a classroom, we'd put in a service request for that to be addressed. And then there's documentation of when and who had completed that task within the system. So we have a little bit more of verification.
Yeah, accountability. And actually, I do recall some of those conversations from last year with our communication, because obviously, our buildings are town-owned, but they're operated by us. I know previously, we had some issues where we communicate stuff via email, but then you kind of lost the follow-up. So now with that work order system, it makes more sense. So I guess that's, and that kind of answers it. It's obviously some of these minor things, whether it's you or the principal are getting entered into that work order system.
Right.
And at least that gives visibility to what's being handled.
And I think that this work order system, I know that there's plans to continue building out a better preventative maintenance plan tied into this so that there's records of when these unit ventilators were done, when were the filters changed? Is this a recurring problem? So if the ceiling tile being wet over and over again, which could indicate that there's a larger problem within the area. I think as the facilities department, Buildings and Grounds, builds out that better preventative maintenance plan, I think we'll see fewer instances in the buildings.
Awesome. All right. Thank you, Mr. Daig.
Ms. McGuire Bruce?
I forgot one thing. I just had one question. You said that the town contracted out for some of the ventilation checklist. Is that normal or?
So although the EPA tools for schools say that these can be completed by school staff, a lot of it requires you to go in, open up the unit ventilator, go into the building management controls, set your maximum temperature, set your minimum temperature, observe the moving of the damper, set your, measure your freeze stats, so on. These require, you know, a considerable amount of time and access to the building management controls. I don't think there's enough staff to do that in a timely manner when the students aren't in session. So in '24, we contracted out. I think it was SAD Building Systems came in and did that work in July. And there was a kind of a cruise that came in and, you know, moved room to room to do that work over a period of time. So this is similar. I think if we had a larger facilities department, right, this could be something that could be part of a preventative maintenance plan and work that's done over the summer, but it would require additional staff.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Dre?
So just real quick, because I don't want to really reiterate what everybody has said. But obviously, we're seeing that having the pre-referendum passing is something that's extremely important for our town and especially for these schools. The biggest thing that I'm noticing is, obviously, it is a reoccurring thing of Buildings and Grounds not having enough people. So I feel like that is probably why that was contracted out, like you stated originally. Now, the problem is, and obviously, this is probably something that you might not be able to answer right at this moment or have to work with the town with this, but is there a strategic plan that's eventually going to move forward so that when we do get these schools, you know, when the referendum does, hopefully does pass, that there's a strategic plan to actually keep these maintained properly? So we know the buildings are old. How are we going to make sure that this doesn't continue to happen? I mean, buckets in classrooms and hallways is really not the right way right now for these students to continue on working, so.
So I think that this is an ongoing process. So I think the work order system coming in was a good first step. The further development of the preventative maintenance plan tied to the work order system is the next step. And then that's going to provide the information on the number of staff needed to appropriately maintain the building. So I think you need data from those two for a short period of time. Unfortunately, I think we're going to have that time if the, even if the referendum passes.
And I just want to reiterate, the "we" in that statement is not the Board of Education. So it would be Buildings and Grounds under the leadership of, you know, Mr. Nunes and Eric Wykander and.
Ruben.
I.
Sorry.
I had it. It was coming. Ruben Gabriel. And I will say that, you know, Mr. Wykander and Ruben since coming on board have been all about the collection of the data and the amount of communication we're having back and forth.
Awesome. And then just my last thing, is this presentation that was given to us something that is going to be made public so that people can see this?
Yes. So all the forms, all the forms are currently on the websites. And then we will put the same summary BOE presentation on the district website.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Gauss?
I just have a couple of questions that came up as others were asking questions. Are work orders being opened if the contractor is finding defective?
That I don't know. In the past, they gave a summary report, which was room by room with the unit number for each of them, and they got that in a summary Excel report. I would imagine it's something similar because they wouldn't have access through UNIS directly. So they'd get that back, and then someone else would have to enter work orders. That would be my assumption.
Who does it isn't really as important as that it gets done and fixed so that it's not a problem later. And has Buildings and Grounds given any idea of any creative workarounds for things like the ventilation in Enfield Street where you, it's really a bad idea to penetrate the roof at this point?
So that building still has operable windows. You know what I mean? So it's mechanical ventilation that was kind of lacking in that room, but there still is ventilation. And like I said before, that when they had done assessments in the building, that CO2 levels were within range. But it was just a general recommendation for the buildings to improve the mechanical for it for days when you don't have the windows open.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
One more, Mr. Coburn?
One more follow-up, Mr. Daig, just because I was skimming through the inspection summary list. And I noticed, so it covers all our elementary and secondary schools and Eagle Academy. I noticed, just like, the annex and central office aren't on there, and we do have the student programs, like the ETLA. So do those also get walked through and inspected? Or are those fallen under differently?
It falls under K-12 schools, and those are program.
Okay.
So it would be, it would be optional for us, but we did not elect to.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Mr. Coburn. All good? Perfect. Mr. Daig, I don't have any questions for you. Just going to thank you and reiterate a couple key points. One is, I think it's nice to see that the town is making some improvements, the work order system, collaboration. I think the "we" is a really important part, that it's not just the Board of Ed. We rely on our town partners and Buildings and Grounds, thanking them for their collaboration and support, but also recognizing the great needs of all of our schools and how can we ensure that they have the capacity to be able to support us wholly as well. I also think it links to many conversations around joint facilities and our pre-REF work as well. So thank you, Mr. Daig.
Thank you.
And now we will transition to item 6B, where our own superintendent will be a guest, joined by our town manager, Matt Coppler. And we will do our review of the internal audit findings.
Yeah, so normally, I wouldn't put myself down here. This is a different view. Yeah. So normally, I wouldn't put myself down here. I got the better one. However, and for tonight's purposes, Mr. Coppler and I wanted to make sure that we jointly provided you with an update in terms of the internal controls audit. Just as a reminder for you folks, and obviously, you know this clearly, when this all came down and came about, this was called a forensic audit. When the auditing firm was brought in, they quickly corrected everybody to let everybody know this would not be a forensic audit. This was just an internal controls assessment, as is titled there for them. What we've done this evening is we've basically taken their presentation that they provided, and for folks in the audience, I did bring extra copies, should you wish to have one. And I just put the excerpts in that are pertinent to the Board of Education. Obviously, the full presentation, I think, is on the town website, should you want to know which slides I cut out. But for purposes of this, I did, we did remove a few of them. The other thing I just remind, especially for those that are new to the board, the Board of Education is audited deeply every single year. So all of our functionings and our spendings are reviewed as part of the regular town audit. So we fall in underneath them. So this would be in addition to it. The next slide just gives you a little bit about the scope and the objectives that were related to this audit. Basically, what they were looking at was the overall budget, special education expenses, how they came about, and then the financial operations. And really, we're talking about, it says 2022 to '24, but I think the impetus behind this was truly the fiscal year '24. You folks know the story, but for those that are maybe listening in for the first time, that was the year in which, you know, we did request from, or I shouldn't say "we," because I wasn't here, and neither was Matt. There was a request to the Town Council to provide additional funding because the Board of Education had overspent. So that was really the impetus behind it. The key audit objectives, just looking for the overall activity. Was there anything unusual? What are the different controls that we have in place? The overages? And then really, where, from a Board of Education standpoint, are we putting ourselves at risk? And I will say that there have been many, and I'm going to sort of jump to the end in a way, there have been many changes since this came about. So they're looking at a, this is really a historical document. The way that we do things today is completely different than the way that was done in '23 and '24. And then lastly, is about findings and recommendations. Because, you know, I believe since I've come on board, everything's sort of been the open book in terms of our budgeting and our purposes and where our money's being spent. So with that, the next four slides we're going to go through is going to be all about the '23 and '24 overages and the potential, or what the auditors believe to be the causes behind them. Anything you wish to add? Or are you just the color man this evening?
You're doing a great job and not any mistakes.
Love it. All right. So first causes in terms of the '23, '24 budget overages. Again, there was a belief that the, that the Enfield Public Schools was going to be receiving 1.4-plus million dollars as part of the Alliance Grant Fund. So over those two years, that money was not received. With that being said, I believe the public schools had calculated in a certain percentage increase. But then, when the assumption was made of the 1.45 million, that assumed a portion of the percent increase. The town then reduces the funding to the school district to reflect the Alliance money that comes in, really no different than what actually occurred last year when I was part of the budget process. We had a 4.23. They reduced down because of the money that legislatively we actually had put on the books. Same thing happens again in fiscal year '24. And through that entire time, no money is received. Now, if you remember, back at that time, in '23, you still had the utilization of our BESR funding. So while you may have planned for the use of Alliance money, while it did not occur, you still had money that was coming in as part of the COVID relief funds that was able to sort of bridge the gap for you. And you're able to sort of make it along in '23. '24, no longer possible for you to be able to do that. Next, overage comes about because of denied capital project reimbursements, and that's the $1.7 million. My predecessor, I believe, utilized funding for the repair and maintenance or replacement of the parking lot, including the paving, the lines being taken care of, and I believe the lighting. I want to say it was over at Barnard School. And it was done so with the understanding that we're going to front this, but the money's going to be returned back. Informed in July '22 that they did not receive the construction Alliance Grant that they thought they were going to be receiving the money back for. So again, expenditure made, no reimbursement able to occur. The schools fully utilize the contingency funds. That's our non-lapsing account, as you recall, or some of you may recall from last year. We did a full 2% carryover plus. And actually, I sent back the additional over 2% back to the town last year. But that full 2%, you have the ability to carry over and utilize. So that had already been fully utilized, so there were no contingency funds to be used. There was also no more remaining COVID relief funds to be used for any shortages. Then there's the mysterious $2.5 million that went into the town account under the designation of Enfield Public Schools, which was actually mislabeled, I guess we could say. It was not actually the Enfield Public Schools. But when you're anticipating receiving money from the state, and then you don't, and then something shows up, and you believe it is yours, there was a period of time there yours, there was a period of time there where there's some going back and forth, but those monies from the town STIF account were deposited incorrectly into our payroll account, described as you see, paid in surplus for redemptions. The assumptions made, again, by my predecessor, that it's from the state to make up for that lack of Alliance funding in the past. Ultimately, incorrect assumption. You no longer have the 2.5 million because it's actually town-designated money. Correct on that?
Yeah, let me, if I could, maybe, because this seems to be a lot more confusing than what it actually is, at least to me. Generally, what happens for your payroll accounts, it's, we put it in, and then all the checks clear, and the money's gone. At the end of the day, that money gets wiped out of there, and it goes into, with the rest of our funds, which is, goes into the state, so it's the STIF, so the State Treasury Investment Fund. And so we get higher interest rates overnight effectively to help with our earnings. And so generally, that money gets transferred from our pull account into the payroll account for the schools, for whatever reason, known only to the person that did it. Instead of taking it from that pulled money account, they took it from the STIF account that we have. Now, six of one, half dozen of the other, really. But how it plays to the story, though, is that when it goes in, and you run a transaction report at the end of the day, it says "State of Connecticut." Well, it actually says a little bit more than that, but the reports from UNIS, when you run that transaction report, doesn't go out all the characters. So what you see is "State of Connecticut." And unfortunately, they ran that transaction report that day, said "State of Connecticut", 2.5 million. They assumed that this was money that they were waiting on, and no follow-up. You know, honestly, I think there is a time lapse, as I talked to my staff, about when this happened and when the first question was asked. I mean, it was a lengthy account or amount of time. And, you know, a lot of this, and in the end, again, jumping to the end first here, you know, it was about communication. And I think, I know if it were me, and I saw money come in, and I was expecting money to come in, I verify. I want to make sure that's my money. And unfortunately, I don't think that happened. And honestly, I think that the relationships at the time were not such that that could happen, right? We like to think that we're different. Hopefully, we are. I mean, he has no problem calling me all the time.
And vice versa?
That's true. But, but I think that's, in this particular issue, this could have been solved very early on and understood very early on if communication was happening.
Good.
Good.
Next clause, you have three different pieces here. We have the unplanned special education students and costs, so in fiscal year 24, so that's the 23, 24 school year, there was an additional number of special education students who came to the district. With special education students who come to the district, so they're already identified, they come to the district with an individual education program, an IEP. So part of those programs may be that they're outplaced, they're already in a different school. You, as the district, start off by assuming that program. So if there could be a significant expense, there could be little to no expense. For that school year, there was a number of students who came in after the budget had been sent. That's not unlike every school year. We have had a significant number of identified students enter into the district this year. They just have not been of a significant expense. So there's differences between that. It's sort of, I will say, and you've heard me say it before, the special education account lines are by far the most volatile account lines that we have, because they can shift quickly depending on what's happening with the students. And again, it's our job to provide them the education as outlined within that IEP. That is what they deserve and need in order to have the high-quality education. So there's a total amount that was expended, that was incurred but was not budgeted. Excess cost funding shortfalls. So for fiscal year 24, the assumption was made that excess costs, so I don't want to get too much into the weeds with excess costs, because it's a pretty deep hole that we can go down, but you have a per pupil expenditure. When you go over a certain number of times that in terms of costs for a student, the expectation per statute is that the state is going to reimburse you for every dollar over that. That has not occurred in a long, long time. The state budgets a flat dollar amount for excess cost reimbursement. They do that well before the school year. The school year occurs, all of the municipalities and districts send in their excess costs of what they would like to have back every single year. It's more than what the state budget's for. It's just the way it is. Some legislation has shifted to say that they will then take the amount per town and give you a percentage of what that full amount would be, based on what's called the town anglic. I can't remember exactly what that stands for. All you need to know is it's the town's ability to pay for things. So Enfield has a very high percent reimbursement, 91%. We are a lower anglic town than many others. So we, they had anticipated getting 91% of their excess cost reimbursement. Well, special education costs have gone through the roof. Expenses are tremendous across the state. Rather than getting 91% back, state, school districts are reimbursed anywhere between 64 and 75%. That obviously is a reimbursement that the district is anticipating receiving. You don't receive approximately $600,000 that you're anticipated receiving. That would have offset your overage. And then lastly, the unfunded state mandates. So there was a State of Connecticut legislative change, saying that special education students are eligible to receive programming. It used to be, what, was the 18 to 21 program? They added on a year, so now it's the 18 to 22-year program. So due to that change, there's a requirement that we maintain and continue services for a certain number of students. So according to the auditors, those were the main causes behind the overage. In terms of variances, because I said from the beginning, they had said that they were going to be looking for, you know, if there was unusual activity, if there was controls in place, and look at those budget overages. So this slide here shows some of the accounts which had either a zero original appropriation or a significant variance in terms of what they budgeted. This is where we do not budget this way. And that's one of the recommendations, is don't budget this way. Well, we don't. But in the past, they did. So what would happen in the past is they would do all of their expenditures, they wouldn't have a line that showed their revenues of what was anticipated to come in. So there would be expenditures, so for example, salary eagle behavior, or salary eagle behav tech. So those are the salaries associated with the Eagle Academy Behavioral Technicians. So there's a significant amount of money there, because there was a number of behavior techs that were brought onboard. All of those behavior techs were not budgeted for, because the anticipation was they would be paid out of the COVID relief funds, the excess cost reimbursements, and all of those things, which we just detailed, did not come back, did not come in. All of those expenses had been utilized, so our Besser fundings had been exhausted. There was no way for them to be paid for and utilized. So that type of information now, you will no longer see, because we have specific revenue lines that show, here's what our expenditures will be, and here's what the revenues will be that are to cover them. Underbudgeted accounts trend over three years. So for the account categories that are noted below from the auditing firm, and when they looked at three years, over the fiscal years of fiscal year 22, 23, and 24, these accounts were consistently underbudgeted. So again, this is not the way we budget now. However, the accounts were continuously below prior year's expenditures in each of those years, and there was really no change in the budget in terms of increases. I can't speak to how the budget was created, because I was not the one who created it. If you look at it from an object code, and you solely change a percentage on top of an object code, you're not going to get to this level of detail. As you know, in our current budget documents, we do it from an account line detail, so every account is looked at to exhaustion, really. So you will notice that there's going to be fluctuations from year to year to year. That does not go to say that we will not have account lines that are overrun, but we also have other account lines that we know are going to have a surplus. For example, sort of ruining my own budget presentation for the future. For example, we will have salary account lines that we know are not being expended because we have unfilled positions. We know, for example, that we have a school psychologist position we're unable to fill, so we go out and we bring in an agency. Because, again, let's bring it back to the IEP, we must provide that programming for that student, so that work needs to be done. So we need to bring in an agency, pay that agency to do it. So the agency expense comes out of one object code, but it's covered by the salary expense that we did not utilize in another object code. Very different way of doing it than what was done here. Let's keep moving. Three-year budget financial analysis for special education. They noted the review of fiscal year 23, that the special education budget overall came in on budget, but through their discussions and conversations with our Director of People's Services and whatnot, that had not been the trend until 2024. And they noted above in the reasons, you know, that I just mentioned, that additional special education students join the district after the budget. And again, we talk about that in terms, as those kids come in, a lot of these account lines that you will see are the ones that are getting, that will get hit unexpectedly. If you have an outplacement student who enters into the district, well, you have to get the student there, so your transportation line's going to get hit. If that student's receiving services at that program, well, that's above and beyond the tuition you pay for that student to go there, so that account line's going to get hit. Plus, the tuition line's going to get hit. So there's just a number of different factors. So that sort of gives you the historical of what they found. Now, the most important part of this entire process is the next two slides, and that's, what do you do so this doesn't happen again? My answer, Matt, is you hire Steve Macchio. No, I'm just kidding. Common findings from the assessment is the gap in communication. I think Matt just mentioned that earlier. There was a definite gap between the town and the public schools related to the conversation regarding the budget, ongoing conversations. He is not incorrect. I do not have a problem picking up my phone and calling his office. Called him two or three times this week alone. We have regular meetings that have been put on the board. We have regular meetings between ourselves, and then we have regular meetings with our leadership teams. So the communication, I think, as a finding, I would check it off as it's been corrected. Inadequate budgeting?
Good start.
Good start?
Good start.
Okay. Inadequate budgeting, budgeting relied on prior year's figures without current year When you don't go down to your object detail, you don't really know. You're going to get microscopic-level detail, probably 10 pages of account lines. So again, I consider that one corrected. Tuition rate fluctuations, this is a difficult one. Special education costs tend to fluctuate. Private outplacements is a for-profit center, if you will, so they're always going to be looking to make a little more money off of you, so those rates are going to go up. Now, I will say on a positive note, there has been some state legislation that has been brought in where they're attempting to actually do a rate-setting across the state, so those fluctuations will hopefully be a little more understandable. And there is volatility. There's always going to be volatility in that account. I will say that, you know, we do the same thing in a way. We change the tuitions that we charge sending districts who have their kids coming here. We adjust them periodically. We adjusted them last year. We adjusted our pre-K tuition last year. So these things occur, but we believe ethically and morally, we need to give enough advance notice of that to the sending districts so that they can plan appropriately. And lastly, the ERP system underutilization, I don't know why they call it ERP, but, any clue? Color man? No?
It was branded that way.
All right. So I'm just going to say the financial system, if you really want to know, was underutilized, to say the least. So within our financial system, we have the ability to have every assignment have a specific number associated with it. Superintendent of Schools, guess what assignment number I get? Deputy Superintendent of Schools, two. And then you keep going into perpetuity, right, for the number of positions that you have. If you were to create a new position that the district did not have before, then you would create a new position control. This was not well-managed in the past. So we have been spending, since I got here, time working to clean this up. So we're at the point now, when I provide you with your full-time equivalent report, your employee report, that you'll get as part of the budget, I will be able to tell you confidently the number of staff that we have, where those staff are located, and as people are adjusted, position controls are vacated, and they go into a new position control number, because that new position that they have has a different number associated. Like, I'm going to give you, Kelsey, I'm going to use you for an example. You've had multiple different positions when you worked for the district, right? So when you would, when you left...
Fourth grade at Crandall.
Oh, come on, I was coming. When you left Crandall, you left position control number 150, and you went to the middle school.
It's your child coach.
Okay, but I was right, though, right?
Middle school after that.
All right, I give up. You left position control number 150, and you went to position control number 327. Okay? Now you know which position control is open and how much money was budgeted for the position control that's now open. You know how much position control, money was budgeted for this one, and how much you've now assumed in. In the past, Kelsey would have been 150, and they would have just moved 150 and changed the name on it. That's not high-quality position control. So we've done a lot of work to make sure that that's getting cleaned up. I could tell you that Dr. Barrios has spent three days earlier this year going through UNIS, and then he just spent two days with UNIS Financial System, taking him through the position control cleanup. As part of that, Lorena Cisneros, the business manager, sits there with him, because he cleans UNIS, she cleans our budget that I'm preparing for you for next year, and then at the same time, they clean up Power School, because you have multiple data systems that are working all at the same time. It is an exhaustive process. It's a time-consuming process, but if you really want to know where you're spending your money, it's the best process we can put in place. Because, and you're going to hear me say this, about 85% of your budget is people, salary and benefits. Lastly, so their recommendations, sort of did some of these already. Regular financial meetings between Mr. Koplner and I, happen so that make sure that he knows what we're doing, and we know what he's doing, and we can talk about any adjustments or fluctuations as they come up. They call it zero-based budgeting. I call it specific account line budgeting. So when we start our budget process, I literally will tell the principals, you need to tell me and defend every dollar that you're asking for. So that's how you, that's a zero-based budget, right? Like, if you want $10,000 for blah, 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 why do you want $10,000 if it's $2,000 less than what you asked for last year? Great, but why? And if it's $2,000 more than it was last year? Great, why? That little question of why is very important. Minimized use and need for budget transfers, if you're doing this properly, and you're doing it on a monthly basis, and you're having a lot of conversations, the way we're doing through our finance committee, through my multiple meetings with Lorena Cisneros, and with our conversations with Mr. Koplner, there really should be no need to wait to the end of year to do budget transfers. You do them as you need them. Contract rate management is a little tough in terms of, you know, that some of it is outside of our control, but what we do, and I, kudos to Mr. Longy for doing this when he was sitting in this seat on interim basis, you have to really take extremely conservative views on what those rate changes are going to be. This is, when you're guessing, because that's really what it is, it's an educated guess about where the rates are going to come in for next year at times, especially when you're doing a budget in December that's not going to start until July, you really want to make sure, this is not where you take your risk. That's not where it's going to happen. And then lastly, we need to make sure that we maximize our financial systems capabilities to, for staffing oversight. And the next piece we have not gotten to, but Mr. Dr. Barrios will be working on it in the future, is the automation between HR and personnel and payroll services. So that will be the next piece. So that was a lot of me talking about what the audit firm was able to find. Again, I... Frustrating in terms of the lack of information and communication that occurred over those two years? Absolutely. Were there bad decisions that were made in terms of spending of money before grants came in? Assumptions about money that may or may not be there? Absolutely. What the auditing firm could not confirm was any type of nefariousness, any type of things like that. And every recommendation I will say that they've put in place, or that they have, excuse me, any recommendation that they have made, I will tell you that we've already put in place. That doesn't mean that we don't have work to continue to happen between the Board of Ed and the town, but I think we're willing and committed to sit here together to be able to answer questions that you may have. And you're going to hear a lot of this again in about a month.
About this?
No, a lot of budget stuff.
Not that, not that.
You are, yeah, I mean, you're more than welcome to come back and talk again, but any questions that we can answer for you?
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Art?
So thank you for coming and speaking to us. Once again, I've heard this one again, so I appreciate more, a little bit more detail in coming from you guys. I am very happy to hear that a lot of this has been implemented, and we're working on this to strengthen, so that we can move definitely in a positive direction. Went to the first finance meeting, which I thought was absolutely fantastic, a little overloaded for me in that moment, but it was, it was really, really great. overloaded for me in that moment, but it was, it was really, really great. And everything that you said as far as line items and stuff like that, I know that's only a small version of what we're going to see when budget comes around, but it's much appreciated. So really, the biggest thing is, and I think everyone needs to understand, is that the reality our district is facing is that more families with children who have special needs are coming into our district. I like to think that it has a lot to do with the services that we're offering in-house versus sending our students out. This is causing money to be a problem and our budgets to be high. But it's also not unique. That's happening in our town. It's also happening everywhere. In our district alone this year, like you said, there was a significant amount, 70, about 70 new students that are new to the district. So I want to make that clear, it's new to the district, not special needs students that are found within the district already. We, my biggest problem that I have is our language that we use during this time, during budget time. So we have great services, but we need to stop making our families feel like they are a burden or a problem to our district. I'm not saying that that's something that you have done, but it is something that has happened in the past and as a child, as a parent that has a child with special needs, it is a very, very hard thing to be put on our shoulders. We are trying to supply our children with the proper education every single child should have. And we really do need to, as a whole community, do better at that. So again, this process with the IEPs is not an easy process for parents to go through. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of testing that's done and many meetings involved all the time throughout the year for that student. I want to remind the parents that our biggest asset is going to be our voices and we need to make sure that we use them. So thank you again, I appreciate it. And I honestly, I know this sounds weird, but I look forward to budget season.
Any other questions? Yep, Mr. Anderson.
I love everything you're doing. I had a couple of questions on the slides. Every year, the auditors come in to do the auditing. Do they actually come to the schools or is it all remote?
No, they, they will spend, you know, how many days? I'm not quite sure, but they will come onsite and go through all, when I say all the purchases, everything's through a control, right? They're going to say, I want to see purchase order 321, invoice 695, warrant 581, right? They don't look at every single one, they just look at selected documents. And then they, they follow it from beginning to end. You know, was the purchasing policy followed? You know, how did the money get into that account? You know, was there a transfer? And if it was a transfer, was it approved by the right people? Who signed off on those? You know, they, they look very specifically at very specific items. Do they look at everyone? No. Be near impossible, actually, with the number of transactions that go on here. But again, you know, they, they review policies. Not all policies every year. You know, I've been a part of these audits where one year they'll focus, you know, whatever their area focus is, you know, we're going to look at purchasing. And then over here, it's going to be human resources. And the next year, it's, you know, how do, how do checks get written? And so they can check those boxes off over a period of time that they're doing the audit.
There's a lot of, they, they are onsite, but I will say they're, they're onsite for a certain number of days, but there's a number of times where they're communicating directly with Lorena Cisneros because they're, I'll say requesting, but it's more of a demand, for additional paperwork because they're trying to verify everything. But they are onsite for a period.
The, the 1.7 million for the parking lot, that was an expected grant that didn't come Why didn't it come in? Was there something that wasn't done correctly? Was there a time issue? What was the reason that that grant didn't come in?
I have no understanding why that would be. It was before my time and if it was a construction grant that was applied for, it very well may have been just denied from the state level. There's a variety of different reasons. I, I can't give you a specific on that one. I, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Got you.
I, I'll chime in. I think from what I remember, one of it was around our eligibility for applying for the grant and like alliance status and if we could apply for that grant or not, there was some word that we could. And then when it came through eligibility and requirements, I believe there was a change. But it had something to do around requirements of the grant.
Okay, because there was a, there was a change to the requirements or that just requirements weren't checked?
Weren't, we, we didn't, well, it was during the time where we were not getting alliance funds, but we were an alliance district. And it was during that phase of timing. And I believe it was an alliance construction grant, but I am not sure. I don't know exactly, but it was, we were anticipating a construction grant and then there were, we, from what I remember, we did not meet the requirements was the reason why we did not get the grant.
Yeah, I, per the auditor, they found that it, we had applied and it was denied. The reason for the denial, I'm not sure it was before me and that's a, the State Department can deny us for a number of different reasons.
The unfunded mandate for going to 21-years-old and moving to 22-years-old, what's the cost effect of that?
It depends on the number of students that you have and it depends on the programming that they, that they have incurred. Some of them are here onsite in our ETLA program, other ones maybe offsite and things like that. I don't have the numbers here, but it's an additional, it's an example, I believe, from the auditing firm, of these unfunded mandates where, yeah, it's a, sounds like a wonderful idea, but if you're not going to send us any additional money, we have to take that on. I can tell you that while not here, this was a very common theme across the state when this came out. There's a lot of superintendents in a lot of different districts screaming about the amount of fun, about the amount of expense that this was going to have.
You said the budget's going to go into microscopic detail. The documents that you showed us at the finance committee? Microscopic's not the word. I mean, you need a microscope in order to read that stuff, it's so small.
Yeah, I don't lie to you, Mr. Anderson, I mean, I give you the truth. There's over 700 accounts and you get to look at every single one of them.
And font size one.
If what I'm hearing you say is you'd like me to use more paper and increase the font size, then I will do that.
Stay, buddy.
Case show off.
You had sent me an email earlier today, or maybe it was yesterday, with the previous budgets, the budget, budget dollars.
Those are annual reports for '23 and '24.
That wasn't really what I was looking for because all that is, is saying, this is the budget that we agreed to and these are all the dollars that match that budget. But that isn't the money that was spent. The money that was spent was millions and millions of dollars higher than that number. My question was, where are those dollars spent at?
Yeah, so that part of it is, so the current budget for the public schools is around $79 million. It costs well in excess of $79 million to fully run the schools. Some of that comes directly out of, for example, the IDEA grant. So if, if you are budgeted to be paid for by the IDEA grant, and I just use this as the one example grant, could be the Title I grant, in the future, it could be the alliance grant because it's now legislatively, we are manned, we are mandated to get that money. No money that is associated with that is in the Board of Education. You will not see it because when we fund our positions, when we pay our positions, it either gets, the payroll account line is either associated to the Board of Ed, town appropriated money, or it's associated with the grant fund, which is completely outside. So that would not be shown in there. So that's where a main, some of the major differences. Back in the years that you were referencing, there was expenditures that were made with assumptions of reimbursements from the state coming back that did not occur. So that's sort of where the main issue came out from.
So you get a, a $5 million grant, that money doesn't show on the budget?
Depending on, depending on the type of grant. Depending on the type of grant, you may not, you may not see it in the Board of Ed appropriation section of the budget. It will be fully funded outside because it's a separate pool of money that is directly sent. For example, the alliance money will get directly sent to the town, so it's going to come out of the grant fund over here. Now this year, you're going to see it because it's the first year and we did not know at the time of creation of this, of this budget year. The budget was actually approved prior to the legislature saying that we were going to be getting the money. So I did show that as a revenue line, but in the future, you won't see that for next year. For IDEA, if we're funding people out of IDEA, there is no dollars associated with those people in the Board of Education appropriation because the money is, it's not coming from there at all.
So it's money that's spent, but it's not money that you have, so it's not money that you show, but it is money you spent?
It is money that we have. It's money that is sent to the town and is placed into the grant fund. And that account line is attached directly to those people. If, if, I think what I'm hearing you're asking, and sort of this is something we could do as part of the budget process, is have a better explanation of Board of Ed, Board of Education appropriation and who's going to be getting paid out of that and all of the other grant appropriations and who will be paid out of that. And you will notice that as part of your FTE report. So I'm going to give you your FTE report, it's going to have every single school, every single central office employee, everybody that we have. And there's a note section there that says if there's somebody different. So if everybody that doesn't have, I would, best way to put it, everybody who doesn't have a note means that it's coming out of Board of Education appropriation. Everybody else will be coming out of those other grant lines.
I just want to make a couple of clarifications here. One is, I think we've been having this discussion around future budget, A, demonstrating our, our line items in and our line items out. The other piece that I think we heard in today's CAE training, sorry, Rob, you weren't there, but also reporting on grants. So Steve, this was not a practice where there was transparent sharing of grants, grant positions, programming, what we were doing with the grants. And I would also share, though, that many districts, superintendents, how they apply and use grant funds is truly, it's not our Board of Ed appropriation. And all of that information is publicly available on EGMS, but I, we have had discussions and I have asked Steve, when he does present our budget, similar to like our Head Start grant that we approved last meeting, where you saw what was paid in the grant and all of our contributions too. So we can see the positions and where, ooh, grants are covering all those people and not, not just us. Because I do think we only pay for a portion of what it actually costs to run our district.
And you will have, there is a slide that I include within the budget presentation, which will show all of the, the line, it will show all the lines of all the different grants that we do utilize in addition to the Board of Education funding. So what I can do is make sure that that's clearly spelled out for you in terms of what the grant, how much those grants are and the, and how we're utilizing those expenses. And we did have, last year, I thought it was a good idea for Lorena Cisneros came and she provided an actual Board of Education update about all the different grants and just, she even overview, you know, this is sort of how we use them. I can go into even more detail than that for you as part of the budget process.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Goss?
Hi, I just, I have a couple of questions and like Mrs. Pickett mentioned, we've been crazy for the past couple of days with training. So if, if I missed it when you said it, I'm sorry, but I just, I'm just looking for some like clarifications on what some things mean. You said contract rate management and I'm just wondering what you meant by that while, while you were speaking?
You said it.
Well...
You're an educator too.
The auditor said it because we utilized their presentation. My interpretation of contract rate management would be, for example, the rate increases that we would expect over the course of the contract term. So each year, there's a certain percentage that's going to be going up. Some of those are easily identified, others of those you have to project out.
So what contracts are we talking about? Just in general, not specific?
Bus, bus transportation.
Okay.
Contract.
That's what it's...
Five-year, five-year, every bargaining unit.
Mm-hmm.
Foreseeable things.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I...
I will tell you that I already locked in our gas and oil prices for next year because there was a savings for us.
Perfect.
And if I could, so, you know, one of my pet peeves about budgeting, sorry, is that there is a lot more that we can predict than what we like to predict, right? Because there's risk. You know, every time we think that, well, you know, healthcare, you know, is only going to go up 10%. Well, you know, there are so many things that change that by the time we get to the actual budget being adopted that we could be wrong, right?
Right.
But there's a lot of things like, you know, electricity. You know, we're locked into a contract for electricity. Now, we know every year that that's going to go up by a percentage. We know what the percentages, now what we don't know is the usage. It's going to be a hot year, a little bit more in the air conditioning. If it's a cold year, a lot more in the, the, can't predict that, right? We don't know. You know, if you look at 10 to 12 years' worth of information, you get a pretty good idea of what's coming next, or at least what might happen. And, and you can give us a number. And, and a lot of people don't do that. You know, what they'll do is, well, we're going to have a 3% increase. And, you know, after about 10 years, they've gone 3%, 3%, 3%, and that number's huge. But you look at the actual, it's like, we're not anywhere close to that number. And why is that? And you find out because what they've done is the lazy way, which is 3%, 3%, right?
Right.
And, and I think...
Well, it's, we're starting from a zero base is...
Right, right.
Easier to, to manage the money.
And my point is, going to be, that that's hard to do. It takes a lot of work. I mean, you know, you don't put a budget together like superintendent here put together overnight. I mean, it's, it's many hours, it's many days, it's many weeks, and, and you think a lot about it and nothing else. That's how you're supposed to do budgets. You know, not everybody does that. Not everybody does that. And, and that's, that's hard. And, and I think in budgeting, it is the details that matter. And, and whether it's an elected official looking at the details, and it takes up a lot of time and I understand that, but, but you need to know what, what you're spending money on because you're going to get called to the carpet at some point. And, and maybe you don't have to know every detail, that's why you pay your staff to know every detail. And that's why he employs people to know every detail to help him out. But, but it's hard work and, and you got to put, you know, you, you get out of it what you put into it. If you're not putting a lot into it, you're not going to get a lot out of it.
Right. And then you mentioned tuition and, and making decisions on, on how to change that. Are there guidelines somewhere or is it kind of a find out what sticks or?
Depends on which way you want to look at this. Are there, if it's our charging of tuition to other places, you don't want to be too high and put yourself in a position where nobody, I mean, it's a, it's a cost savings comparative to a private outplacement. But at the same time, you want to make sure that you, it's the Goldilocks effect, right? So it, it's, it's difficult and you, you don't want to make too large of a shift over time. I believe, I believe we've sort of found a little bit of a sweet spot right now where we are and we're making small incremental increases. Because, you know, inflation being what it is, it's going to go up a little bit every year.
Right, and I'm just wondering because, you know, I'm not sitting in your chair. And I'm just wondering because, you know, I'm not sitting in your chair, you know, is there, is there a method to the madness?
Whole lot of, whole lot of research, as Mr. Kopppler just said, a whole lot of research about what everybody else is charging and what the market rate is, if you will, and where we come in as compared to that market rate.
Okay. And then the IT guy in me is, you talked about all of the labor with data being entered into Munis and other systems. Will that ever be automated and synced that way?
That is the goal.
Okay.
That is, one of the last items that they put in here was maximizing the year features, improving staffing oversight and automated financial processes. The goal is to allow the entry point into the district. People apply to come to work here and then letting that just immediately flow right into our payroll system.
So there, there are mechanisms.
There are mechanisms as part of Munis that were underutilized and we will begin to work on, but honestly, we tried to tackle the highest leverage pieces first.
Sure.
And that was the position control.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Beautiful. I'm going to wrap this up. So I just want to thank you, Matt, for joining us here tonight, and thank you, Steve, for sitting in that seat and doing a presentation for us. After all, this was not even our audit, it was the town, so appreciate that. A couple of things that I just want to make sure are highlighted. Again, we do comply with yearly audits. There were many unique factors during these two years that were looked at and just thinking that it was multiple factors and again, that there was no nefarious actions that took place. I also want to thank you, Steve, for taking the time to share kind of what we've already adjusted and continue adjustments that we are having around kind of what do we like to see? How could that look in a budget? And being open to that conversation and making some really successful transitions and changes. As a board, I think we are moving forward and are planning with a 26, 27 school year. So we are putting these old years to bed and we are moving forward. So if there are any kind of continued questions or concerns, I'm just going to encourage you to speak with your caucuses because we are on to 26, 27 and monitoring our 25, our 20, yeah, 25, what year we are, 25, 26 school year in our finance subcommittee. So thank you very much. And I'll now let you transition back to your seat for the next portion of your update. Thank you. Once you get to your seat, Steve, are we pulling names for who goes first?
Oh, no. We always start with the senior.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. So there's a good amount going on as we get into this holiday season at the high school. Starting off, the class of 2026 has a Red Robin night on December 16th. So the fundraiser is available all day, but the raffles will start at 4:00 PM. So you can go there, you know, have a nice meal and donate to the, well, you actually don't have to spend any extra money because it will just come right out of the bill, but donate to the class of 2026. There's a door decorating contest this week. It will close on Friday, so it's already in process. And the teachers will choose on Friday and the winners will win prizes. There's a chorus concert on the 10th at 6:30 in Enfield High School Auditorium. Tickets are free for that. And on December 18th, the band in United Sound will have a concert at 6:30. Progress reports are coming out soon. Grades closed yesterday. And on a very positive note, four students were recognized for the North Central Chamber of Commerce Act of Kindness Award. Those students are Ben Knapp, Aleah Walters, Lena Fury, and Zachary Davies. So congrats to you guys. That's a very impressive honor. Seniorware is available for purchase in the school store all, all week. And finally, ASVAP testing will be held on Friday, December 19th. Chase.
Good evening, everyone. So at Enfield High, all winter sports are really starting to kick up now. I know both basketball teams had scrimmages earlier this week, so that's really exciting. And I wish all of the winter sports just the best of luck. The Spanish Honor Society is hosting a book drive to collect language books. They're looking for French, Spanish, Portuguese, et cetera. Students can drop off the books in the language classes or in the class offices. Students also have a winter assembly on Friday, Friday, the 19th, featuring musical performances and a family feud game. So that should definitely be something to look forward to. On December 12th, representatives from Aznuntuk will be hosting an application support session at Enfield High School, and they're also helping students complete their FAFSA. So any seniors still navigating that college admissions process should definitely come to Enfield High on December 12th. Huge congratulations to Eva Burlingame, David Fenoff, and Avery LaLoup on being top performers on the, on the PSAT that was administered back in October. Nice job, guys. Amazing. And lastly, from me, the Board of Ed reps administered a student-wide survey last month where we identified two major student priorities, career exploration and college planning. So right now, we're brainstorming ideas and actions to advocate for and expand opportunities to, to prepare students for life after graduation. So I'll definitely keep you all updated on that. And that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask a question of Chase? Sorry, you sparked my interest now because we were talking about student data. So that is a survey you as board, student board reps put out to the student body yourself?
Yes, last month, yes, back in November, we sent it out, just like a wide range of questions that students submitted, and we were really able to pinpoint and identify the, all of the students' top priorities.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'd be interested to kind of see what that survey is and your results. So thank you for your work for getting additional feedback from students. It's nice to have student reps up here, but it's nice to see ways that you are encouraging and getting additional student voice to be included here at the DIA. So thank you both. Back to you, Steve.
Okay. I'm going to try to do this report a little shorter than the last report, but at the same time, just your annual EPS update related to the enrollment report. So as was provided to you in your packets and can be found online by everybody, so I didn't bring any additional copies. You have a number of different items here that will give you the overview of the student enrollment, breaks it down by grade, further breaks it down by sort of where the students are going, if they're going out of district. And then I provided you with an elementary class size because as we had mentioned as part of the budget process last year, that was sort of the number one priority was we were going to be tackling elementary class sizes. So we'll go through this quickly here for you. So the number of students that are attending the Enfield Public Schools is 4,519. So just, those are the number of kids that are literally walking in your doors. Please note that one of those students actually pays tuition to attend because they're from outside the district. So we do have one out of district student, so from a neighboring community who pays us tuition to come into the district. We are having continual conversations about the opportunity for increasing that number in a variety of different ways. So hopefully we'll see that number go up in the future. We do have 19 students that are currently outplaced in private facilities. So the reason why those are separated out is because we, it's how we report them to the state. So we report the students to the state who we are placing out in private, out of district placements. If they attend a public out of district placement, then they're going to be reported by those folks. So that's why they're sort of broken down differently this way. When you look at the second section here, there's some sort of middle section, we have 14 students that are, have been outplaced and they're in public facilities. So those public facilities, just so you know, we obviously pay for tuition for the students to go there, but we're also required to transport them. So you have a cost for that as well. There's a different state facility, so off, there are times or instances where DCF will residentially place a student in a specific state facility due to their level of need. When that occurs, those are likely residential centers and things of that nature, we're required to pay the educational portion of those costs. So we do have three students that are placed for that. Students that attend state technical schools in your, there are 44, we pay for the transportation for those students to go there. You're going to note these on the next page. It's going to go in a lot more detail, or excuse me, two pages later, it'll go in a lot more detail for you, but you'll see those under Cheney Tech. Students attending the other state technical school, 16, those are the students who are going to AI Prince Tech. So that will get paid, the transportation will get paid for those students from Hartford. Regional agri-science, so we do have students that attend Suffolk and they go to the Regional Agri-science Center. 27 students attend there. We pay for their tuition, their transportation. If there's any additional special education services or needs that they require as part of that programming, they bill us for that as well. Students attending magnet school programs, 214 that attend, we pay tuition and we pay for special education services. It's going to be a little bit of a hot topic, I feel, coming up legislatively because two years ago, the legislature set the rate at 58% of the 23, 24 tuition rate, and they have not changed that. So if you are one of those magnet schools, your amount that you can charge Enfield for our kids that go there is 58% of the 23, 24 tuition. So tuition's gone up over every year. They've gotten no additional money from Enfield. So the reason I say legislatively anticipate this to come up is they're going to go after the state to try to get their money because their tuition has gone up, right? Expenses have increased. So I would anticipate you hearing a little bit more about that as part of the legislative session. So the total number of kids that we have that are Enfield kids who don't come into our schools, but you do have some financial responsibility for, whether it's for tuition, for transportation, for special education, there's 318. So I think you've noticed over many, the last number of years, five to 10 years, enrollments across the state have, tend to decrease in districts. The number of magnet school opportunities and choices that the kids have to go to has drastically increased over that same time. There was a time where you could limit the number of kids you would pay for seats. Those times are gone. If a student wants to and can get into one of these schools, we get the bill. So you're, that, that, there's just a lot more choice for kids. So that's where some of your enrollment numbers have come. And then as of the time I printed this, we had 155 students, and I'll carefully watch my words here, who notified the district, whose parents notified the district that they have chosen to homeschool their children. There's other kids that are in this, in this town who have not notified us, but it's their parental right to not send their kids to our school. We request them to send the paperwork in. Sometimes we get it back, sometimes we don't. But from our tracking purposes, we're at about 155. So when you add those all together, you know, 400, or 4,538, another 318, plus another 155, the numbers are very, are much closer to where you're probably accustomed to five, 10 years ago. Next page, total enrollment by grade, broken down as of October 1. The reason it says unaudited is because we're required to send our numbers into the state by October 1st. Then basically we have until January to clean it. There's a variety of different reasons we have to clean our data. The most popular is what they call orphan, literally orphan student identification numbers. So basically, there's sort of kids that were in transition. They may be showing up in two different information systems. So we have to work with our information system and the other district to figure out where that child is supposed to be in transition. But you can sort of see how it was broken out in terms of your totals. That very colorful diagram, if you follow from the top right to the bottom left, trying to make it a little easier for you to see the cohorts. So I'm going to use the blue in the middle. In 2020, grade five had 347 kids. The following year, they're now in grade six, they went up two kids, they have 349. The next year, they went up another four kids, they have 353. The next year, they're in grade eight, they went up two more kids, they have 355. And you could see the trend as we move on and on and on. There's a lot of transancy. A lot of kids coming into the district, a lot of kids leaving the district. So it's a little bit all over the place, but if you want to really look at achievement data and things of that nature, we try to do it from a cohort perspective. So here's your cohort numbers. The bottom, I think Chairperson Pickett had mentioned sort of the, or it might've been Ms. Gerard, had mentioned the changes and the differences in terms of the students that are coming into the district. This bottom chart was not given last year, but I really wanted to make sure you guys had a picture. There, there, there's shifts that are occurring. So open choice has gone from a little bit over 100 students. I could tell you that part of that unaudited, now more audited since the time of this printing, it's actually 94 in terms of our number of open choice students. Special education, we've, we've, and you've seen this across the state, drastic numbers of increases since COVID, started at 884 in 2020, now up to 1,149. Free and reduced, you had a dip there from 2020 to 21, but now we're sort of trending towards 2,317. You know, that sort of seems a little odd, and I do have some explanation to that. Diane Edwards does a phenomenal job in terms of our nutrition department and trying to have folks fill out the paperwork so that we can provide them the assistance and support financially for the kids to receive their meals. Back in COVID times, you didn't have to do any of that. The state provided us a bunch of funding. Remember the times of free breakfasts, free lunches, all that? And those times are now gone, and now we're chasing after people to do the paperwork again. Some people are willing to fill it out, other people are a little more reluctant to fill it out. You know, we do everything we can to try to get out to those folks and let them know that this is available for them, but that is a portion of this. It also has become a little more difficult in sort of, in terms of the direct certification network, federal changes and things of that nature have affected sort of people's ability to automatically qualify. So you're going to see a reduction in numbers there because of that. And then ELL, or English Language Learners, we're up to 222. Last year, we asked for, well, let's go back a couple of years. We had six T-Sol teachers, so T-Sol teachers of teaching, teaching English. Second, well, I can't even get the acronyms right, Danielle.
I'll write that one down.
Yeah. It's on your list. I did, I did add it. Yeah. So we had six, you went through the catastrophic year with the number of layoffs that you had. Last year, we were able to add a couple back in. I could tell you that because of the numbers, the way they are, because of the distribution of those numbers across the schools, there is sort of rules about when you go over a certain number of students within a school, it has to become a bilingual school, there's a different requirements for those. So you're likely going to be seeing some additional requests along this line. Now, I think somebody had asked me a question at one point about this. Student tests in slash out of the ability to receive these services? And the answer is yes, they, they get tested annually. And you know, there does come a time where they no longer qualify. That does take a period of time though. Next page is all of your detail related to where all of those magnet schools are going. So 214 kids this year compared to 195 last. You could see they go all the way from turning three, not even three years old, up to grade 12. Then we have our Cheney Tech numbers. 13 additional students chose to go to Cheney Tech this year versus last. AI Prince, that's the technical school down in Hartford that they pay for the transportation. We had two additional decide to go to AI Prince Tech. And then we have the exact same number of students that are attending Suffolk AgSci. There is the note over here on the bottom right. If a student chooses to go to a magnet school that's part of the Hartford Public Schools, there is no tuition charge for those specific schools. They've been noted there for you, and it's parent choice as well. Last one for me this evening is your elementary class sizes. The printout here, the colors that are associated with it, just want to explain. If it's a red, that means we reduced a class size. So we have one less teacher that is within that building. 24, 25 is obvious. There was a number of reductions across the district, 127 staff. And then you look at 25, 26. So those are the locations where we added teachers back into those particular schools or those particular grade levels. You will notice that sometimes the numbers are the same from side to side and whatnot. So you always balance within your school first, right? So if, if you look at Enfield Street, kindergarten has four, and first grade has four, and second grade has three. Well, they may have a need to have one of those fours follow up and become, and that three becomes. three becomes a four the following year. You know, and then you may need to shift teachers that way. You still have your 11 teachers, but it's where they're designated. We leave that to the principals' decisions to try to balance out those classroom sizes. I did not include any additional staff on the right as of right now. This is not a budget presentation, okay? So I kept your enrollment number, I kept your number of staff at the classroom sizes exactly the same. I just wanted you to know for next year, if this is what you would have, these are what your class sizes would look like. Okay? Any questions on enrollment?
One is, I'll just say for the public, thank you all here. And that was in the packet. So if you're interested in like seeing the numbers that we were just talked about, it is in our publicly posted packet. I will look to my colleagues for questions. Ms. Gerard?
We were laughing because it was very clarifying when I was asking the question about ESS specifically. I was digging deep into it, and I'm like, but why? Why is that happening? So now I understand, and that's great. Yeah, thank you for that. So one of the other questions that I had, and if you don't have the answer right now, it's totally okay. How many students are attending Great Path, the magnet school? Because I know that that one, you said specifically, we pay tuition for, if I'm correct. And is it like, I guess really my thing is just kind of being that transparent, like how much are we paying for? And I'm pretty sure you're probably going to go more into detail when budget season comes around and get into that again of like, how much is it and stuff like that? So.
Yeah, I generally won't break it out by the individual schools because you can see the the listing of the schools, there's a significant number to them, and we're not going to have their, this so this is again, back to that previous
Right.
... presentation, we're not going to have their anticipated tuitions.
Yep, right.
We're going to be projecting over the last number of years, this is what they've done to us, and we'll utilize that number to break it out. I don't have the Great Path number right now, but I can put in the weekly update.
That's fine. Thank you.
Any others? All right. So thank you, Steve, for this report. I would just know, I was taking a quick look at like average class size. We do have some disparities between our schools a bit around class size, so that's just something for us to maybe, I mean, not huge discrepancies, but just considerations to kind of look at as we're kind of doing some staffing. I also think it's really important, I think this helps us, A, have a better understanding of the landscape of our students, but also that we remember that there's children's faces behind all these numbers, and it's really the success of the students that we're hoping to achieve. So thank you for this report. And now let's move on to the very patient audience members who are here. As I'm getting the list, I will do my quick reminder. Thank you so much for joining us. Just some reminders for public comment. One is each speaker will have four minutes. This time is for your comments. It's unfortunately not a conversation between the board and you all. The board's role is governed into the district, so please frame your comments and remarks accordingly. Also, remember that all comments become part of public record. In keeping with board policy and state law, we ask that you avoid sharing information that's confidential, including personally identifiable student information or specific personnel matters, which unfortunately, we cannot address in a public forum. We appreciate your respectful decorum and fair treatment in our community, and thank you for being here tonight. And I am going to unfortunately make an adjustment, and I think he'll be understanding, and ask Ms. Lori Gates and Pam Thompson to come forward, please. Thompson, sorry. Are you going to go separately? Or typically, you come together, you can come together.
I'm going to fit in the form.
I got you, girls.
Lori Gates, 3. Thought it was on. Is it on now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Missed my address. We have the Wreaths Across America convoy returning to Enfield tomorrow morning for our ninth time. For people that are not familiar with Wreaths Across America, we'll be really quick. 20 years ago, they started, the wreath company in 1992, Worcester Wreath Company, had a surplus of wreaths. Morale Worcester remembered his trip to Arlington as a young, the 12 or 13 years old child, and decided to send his surplus of wreaths down to Arlington. He did it for a long time, all his own, kept it quiet, and in 2005, somebody took a picture with all of the wreaths on the graves in Arlington, and it went viral. And so in 2005, they decided to open that up. Other cemeteries wanted to do it, so they started sending a wreath with each service branch on it, correct?
Correct.
And then it went from there and became a fundraiser. So Pam will go more into the cemetery demographics and how many locations and whatnot we have. We have it here in Enfield. So because of where we live, as the convoy heads from Harrington, Maine, down to Arlington National Cemetery, they drive right through here. And for the ninth time, they've asked to stop in Enfield. And they come to Enfield because of what all of Enfield does. So specifically, our school system. And I know everybody, we just announced it earlier in the week, end of last week, and everybody's making their signs and their flags. And we have a route worked out with Enfield Police, they're going to pass every single school in town. So it'll take them about an hour, hour and a half to make their way through town, and we'll end on the town green with a short ceremony with the Veterans Council. Everyone's welcome to attend the ceremony. We'll adjourn to a private luncheon, thanks to the Veterans Council, before we send them on the way. We have five tractor trailer trucks coming tomorrow. Three are headed to Arlington National Cemetery with their wreaths. One is headed to the Long Island National Cemetery, and the shorter truck is headed to the 9/11 crash site in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. They're Walmart drivers. They're chosen because of either their safety miles for Walmart or because of their veteran status. So tonight on social media, I'll put out their names and why they were chosen, because I do have that. They are safely here, they're staged at the East Windsor Walmart tonight, and they're in the hotel. So I'm very excited that we get this honor again. They were coming last year, we had bad weather, so we had to cancel and wish them luck. They're here again, please, everybody do the no snow, keep the keep the temperature above 32 degrees for tomorrow morning. There's going wheels up at promptly 10, the East Windsor Walmart. So if you're somewhere along the route, please go out there, honk your horns, wave, do what you can. If you have children in the schools, which I assume is why people will be watching this, there will be fire department, police, and EMS apparatus at the schools so they can salute. So don't be afraid, if you go past your kid's school and there's a fire department there, there's not an emergency. As in years past, we are allotted a couple of seats to ride in the trucks. And last year, we decided that we would have the top two sponsor people ride as a thank you, the people that sponsored enough wreaths. So because it got canceled, we moved those two people to this year, that's Joe LaCory and Marie Pisner. So they will be riding tomorrow morning. I do have one additional seat. And so, because I like do surprises. Mr. Machio, can you report to Walmart at 9:30 tomorrow morning and take a ride?
I'd be more than happy to.
You're going to learn about Wreaths Across America tomorrow.
I will tell you, I know much about Wreaths Across America. My father-in-law, God rest his soul, was a veteran who passed away in every Saturday, this coming Saturday, we'll spend our Saturday morning laying wreaths up in the Massachusetts Veteran Cemetery.
Well, thank you for your family service. And now you get to see all of your schools and what they're going to do.
Absolutely.
So thank you to everybody who has participated, sponsored wreaths, supports the program. It's because of what this town does that they come back. I had a driver from four years ago send me a picture this weekend with his Enfield pin on. He said, I'm not part of it this year, but I'm still wearing my Enfield pin. They love Enfield. They get down there and they see the other people that have been to Enfield, and oh, you got to go to Enfield, what year did you go? And they're all trading stories. So it's because of what this town does. So thank you to everybody. I'll be posting the route everywhere tonight. And I can't wait to see all the pictures from tomorrow. So thank you. Surprise.
Don't go anywhere.
Okay.
So I'm here on the other portion of Wreaths Across America. I'm here to invite everyone to Saturday's ceremony, which is hosted by the John Matolick American Legion Auxiliary. And it is happening this Saturday on December 13th at 12:00 PM at St. Patrick's Cemetery, which is 1558 King Street. And if you've ever been over there on that Saturday, National Wreaths Across America Day, you know parking is a challenge. So please come early. And we have Home Depot and my husband is the traffic control person, because we push everybody in in a one-way direction. So I'm thrilled to also share that thanks to all our amazing sponsors, Enfield will be receiving our wreaths on Thursday, and we will be receiving 2,508 wreaths. And that is the highest number since we started in 2008. So I'm really excited about that. We have not only the great volunteers that come in on Saturday to lay the wreaths after our ceremony, but we also have the Daughters of the American Revolution and the Knights of Columbus will be taking about 333 wreaths over to St. Adalbert's. And that's our first time we've been able to expand out to another location at that number of wreaths. So it's pretty exciting. So I'm asking everyone to come on out, come to the ceremony on Saturday. Let's honor our veterans by placing a wreath and saying their names and keeping our promise to never forget them. We also need or in need of volunteers to place the wreaths and assist with the cleanup afterwards. And if you're interested in volunteering, just please show up. I don't have a sign-up sheet, just it seems to work out pretty good. People like to come early and stay late. Let's see. And my second reason for being here is to announce that last night, I received an email from Wreaths Across America, and they are doing their sponsor one, get one, that is you, the Wreath Match Program, which is really very helpful. We get about 1,000 free wreaths with the program each year in the past few years. So this, it really helps us out. So the trick is that it begins on December 14th and it ends on December 31st. But I'll put out the information on social media, and I'll also have flyers in the program on Saturday. So just watch, watch for all of that. And thanks again for listening to us tonight. We're really excited for this, for tomorrow. I like to, can't wait to see you. I'll be there, I'll be there at Walmart.
She's written in it.
I've been, yep, we've written it. Awesome, awesome job. So thanks again, and I hope to see everyone on Saturday. Have a great night.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I said it sounded back and forth, but I also will just share with folks that we shared Enfield Public School pins with our Wreaths Across America trucks. We heard that the town gives town of Enfield pins, and we got a little maybe jealous, and we're like, we got pins too! And it is our schools that make it so magical, so I hope that that is an additional token of appreciation for them stopping by. Thank you, ladies, so much for all the work you do, and thank you, Lucian, as well.
Thank you, thank you. I'm leaving it on for the next person.
Thank you. Mr. Ryder.
Scott Ryder, former Misty Meadow, relationship to the district, father of a senior. I am here this week because we have our parade tomorrow. We have the wreath ceremony itself on Saturday, and in between the two, on Friday, December 12th, we are celebrating EPS PJ Day for 2025. Again, that's this Friday, December 12th. There is a graphic up on the screen, and just to read the flyer, that should have been shared either through Parents Square or on paper with all of our elementary schools, our middle school and our high school. I wanted to let everybody know that Enfield Public School students, staff, and visitors may wear school-appropriate pajamas to school on Friday, December 12th. In exchange for an optional $1 donation, please bring your cash donations to school on Friday, December 12th, or to donate online, please visit give.c Connecticut Children's, so that's plural, Connecticut Children's, give.c Connecticut Children's.org/EnfieldPTO25. Every donation goes directly to the Center for Cancer and Blood Disorders at Connecticut Children's, formerly known as CCMC, if you're not aware. Please wear school-appropriate attire, PJs appropriate for school and weather, no footies or slippers. Just a little bit about this event that has been near and dear to my heart. So this is the 15th anniversary of PJ Day for CCMC. It is a statewide-recognized holiday that happens on the second Friday of December. For the last few years, each and every one of Connecticut's 169 towns have participated in addition to neighboring school districts and a handful of Massachusetts towns. Enfield has participated almost since the beginning at one school or another. I've assisted a couple of EPS elementary schools with CCMC PJ Day, as I made and distributed flyers for both Hazard Memorial School and Eli Whitney as a parent. Then as a proud Board of Education member since 2017, when I learned that we had other schools in the district participating, they even had building captains like at Parkman and a huge staff participation contest like at JFK. If you want to know why these schools and staffers got involved, it's because they personally taught a student who went to CCMC for cancer treatments, or was recently treated at CCMC, and some were parents of patients. So in 2018, as I was a Board of Education member and sat with where you are now, I suggested that we fundraise as a district, that we become Team Enfield. Smith-Buss joined us. And recently, the North Central Connecticut Chamber of Commerce also allowed us to share our fundraising efforts with its members, all donating just $1 to wear PJs on Friday. The second Friday of the month with this year is Friday, December 12th. We have been consistently in the top 10 fundraising teams throughout Connecticut for the entire time we've participated as a district. And that's competing with some businesses who on occasion have just written one $10,000 check, and that's great, and I appreciate it, and so does CCMC. But we celebrate each and every coin that we collect and count and turn in, and we have been a top-five fundraising team for four of the last five years. I want to thank everybody who lets us do this. I want to thank Superintendent Machio for letting me run this this year. For PJ Day at Connecticut Children's is a simple, yet profound way to teach empathy and to show others that small acts, when done together, can create a significant change, in this case, for children battling serious or rare cancers or other illnesses. Children who are our neighbors, not just our Connecticut neighbors, but for many that I have personally met, helped fundraise for and live and learn right here in Enfield. Thank you, Enfield Public Schools, for your support. So I hope to see each of you make a contribution. Once again, our team website is on enfieldpto.com, and our website is give.c Connecticut Children's.org/EnfieldPTO25. Also, as a parent, I hope to share at the town council, our Safeguard Jingle Jam auction was Friday, December 5th. I saw many of you there, I saw a lot of our town councils there. As a parent of a senior, thank you for supporting us. Olivia, I saw your parents there, your dad was helping with the auctions. And lastly, I'll leave with this. I mentored a student who learned at Parkman, and then at JFK, we spent six years together every Thursday. I'm not sure if he'll see this, but I know that we have a lot of teachers and staff in common, and today is his birthday. He's also a senior like my daughter, so I just wanted to say happy birthday. You know who you are. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Andy. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for coming back, Mr. Ryder. Happy PJ Day. And Ms. Griffin.
Right? Nope, okay. First off, bravo, Danielle. Our kids are the future, they're not burdens. Just going to respond to the presentations tonight regarding Mr. Degg's presentation about the, talking about proper maintenance in the future. Proper, bleh, proper maintenance of our buildings will only happen if the DPW is not subject to political whims. It needs long-term plans that don't get eviscerated by changing town councils. The town manager needs to truly assert their role as working for the good of the town and be apolitical. Regarding Mr. Machio and Mr. Copley's presentation, the budget issue was not malfeasance. It could be said that the budgeting was done with naive, in a naive way and wishful thinking regarding the state fully funding its excess cost obligations. But again, not malfeasance. As Mr. Machio said, budgeting and financial controls are now done very differently, already mostly in line with the auditor's recommendations. Also, note well, it is the central office that does the budget, that are day-to-day management of the district. It is not a Board of Ed's function. You are only approving the total numbers. You don't make the budget. So now, it is time to remember that our schools and those humans in the buildings have very real current needs. Your job is to advance and advocate for meeting those needs. Your job is to advance and advocate for meeting those needs. I ask you to keep in mind, this is Enfield. We don't live in La Mancha. Please stop tilting at windbills and get to work on real issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. All right. We will move on to board member comments. Any volunteers? Oh, Mr. Ryder, thank you for being a firsthand.
I feel like I'm always the first one. So I just have two little things. Through the chair to the superintendent, I'm just wondering if the strategic plan for the district has been posted or is it available for us to view? It's kind of something we've talked about, so I just wasn't sure if that's happening.
Steve, you want to share? Sure, I asked you tonight.
It is not up on the website as of yet. We will self-admittedly say we have a lot of work to do on our website. But we can place it up on the website. It's just a matter of, we've lost track and it will go up, as well as the individual school improvement plans need to be placed on their individual websites as well.
Perfect. And then just one other thing. The weekly updates, I'm enjoying that from you. One of the things that I really liked was the student advisory and just kind of breaking that down and how you met with the students. I really enjoyed meeting with the students when we did the meet the candidates night, when we were campaigning. And one of the things that I enjoyed was they came around, asked questions, had concerns and stuff like that, really open. I'm just wondering, besides our student reps that are here, how as a Board of Education, can we engage and kind of work with them? Can we go to one of those meetings? How can that work? So.
So I'm not going to put Steve on the spot for that.
Oh, that's okay. If you, no, no, no. If you don't have an answer tonight, it's totally okay. I just, it was something I just wanted to put out there that I would love to be a part of, and I think that the board should definitely be a part of that if they would like to as well. So.
Yep, I think we will be having some conversations on getting student feedback. I also would think carefully about kind of our role in ensuring kind of how we continuously get student feedback. Oh God, and then my own timer's going off that I didn't set. So, but thank you Danielle. I think the point of how do we get student feedback and use it in our decision-making is a really important piece. Thank you. Any other board member comments? Mr. Coburn.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll be keeping my comments relatively brief this evening. Earlier today, I was able to attend a leadership conference hosted by CAE, which is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Educations. In addition, hearing from experienced leaders, keynote speakers, there was productive discussion concerning the development, adoption and implementation of missions and visions for local Board of Educations. So as we get underway with this new board term, conducting boards business, I wanted to offer in my quote, "It is not enough to be busy, so are the ants. The question is, what are we busy about?" This is by Henry David Thoreau, American philosopher. With this being our last regular meeting of the year, I just want to conclude wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Ms. Burkulio.
I guess you could say I was inspired by the talk of monthly themes last month. So I just wanted to note that tomorrow is Human Rights Day and December is Universal Human Rights Month. So I wanted to take just a moment in honor of this day and monthly theme to center our work and our focus around the universal truth that every child has the right to learn. Every child has the right to learn in an environment that supports their physical and emotional well-being. And in our district, that right includes some of the things we talked about tonight, like safe buildings, clean air and conditions that allow students to learn without health barriers. As we head into budget season and make decisions about facilities and resource allocation, I hope we continue holding ourselves accountable to the basic promise that both dignity and safety are not optional, they are rights afforded to our students and it is our responsibility to uphold them with conviction and unwavering commitment. Human Rights Month is also a powerful reminder that students have the right to participate meaningfully in decisions that affect their education and well-being. And as it was already mentioned, I hope we continue expanding opportunities for student input, leadership and partnerships across all grade levels in our district. And I would continue to encourage our student representatives to use their voices whenever possible, including sharing more specifics on the findings you mentioned and maybe some suggestions coming out of that data. Our students are not just the future, you are our partners today. So let us honor this month by ensuring every decision we make reflects the world they deserve, one rooted in dignity, safety and the unshakable belief that every child's potential is worth fighting for.
Thank you, Ms. Burkulio. Any other comments? Ms. McGuire Bruce.
All right, thank you. Ms. Kushman just stepped out, but I wanted to thank her for asking about the superintendent's meetings with students. Mr. Ryder already mentioned, Mr. Macchio has been giving us some information from those meetings, which I appreciate and would love to see that practice continue. One meeting we heard a little bit about involved a group of students that was discussing the school culture and the engagement of instructional practices within the classroom. Something I thought that was important that came out of that conversation, especially as we begin to think about our next budget cycle, is that our high school students are still asking after two years for the reinstatement of Eagle Block. They shared many reasons, including the need for time for clubs and organizations to meet. And we also know that this was well utilized for academic support. I hope we keep that in mind during our upcoming budget presentation and show our students that we know that they have felt the impacts of previous budget decisions and we consider how we can further support their learning and their well-being within the schools. Secondly, there was a suggestion, a student suggestion for teacher training surrounding handling of delicate situations between students. And I was just wondering through the chair to the superintendent if that feedback would be brought back to the PDAC Committee. If you can answer now or not, that's fine. I just.
The feedback is shared with professional learning.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, and in terms of steps that the district is taking as part of our district improvement plan. So it's all related to that.
Great, thank you. And then the pre-ref community conversation is December 17th at 6:00 PM. This is virtual, so I think it's a great opportunity for those who have difficulty attending meetings in person, whether it be for work or childcare. I know it can be challenging, so it's a great opportunity for you to be involved and informed in what's happening with our pre-ref. So I encourage everyone to try to take that opportunity to attend. And then lastly, just happy holidays and have a safe, healthy and relaxing break.
Thank you. Mr. Gaus.
My voice is very weak right now, so I'm going to be very brief. I just want to join everyone in wishing everyone out there Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and to afford a reminder that the next time we meet, our days are going to start getting longer.
Thank you. Any other board member comments before I go? Perfect. All right. So I am going to, just a couple of quick things. One is thank our community. We had a couple here tonight. We have Wreaths Across America, we have PJ Day, we had torchlight parade on Sunday, my favorite like family event with the tree lighting. So many folks, so many, our schools are like buzzing. If you're in Parents Square families, there's lots going on, so please make sure you're paying attention. I did want to thank our board. It's not just Tuesday nights that we do work. We sat in training last night together for like two hours. We sat in training all day together at CAE. And I am giggling and saying like we're all day together, but I think these have been opportunities for us to work together and re-center our work ahead. So I appreciate us being able to be together and also thank us all for our commitment in doing that work. A couple of things I just wanted to highlight, the interschool music program also starts this week. I think, I thank our JFK Band and Eric Spoldy, I think is how he pronounces his last name. These are, thank you, these are creative solutions to some of our Lhasa programs. So there is no longer music band programming at 5th grade at our elementary schools anymore, but this is a way for students to get some opportunity, so chorus and band. I think our hope here as a board is that we can continue to support and expand on these efforts. I'm really excited to see what this is about. I also want to just kind of remind folks, don't forget to wear your pajamas on Friday, make a donation to Connecticut Children's, enjoy the winter break. I'm going to remind families and everybody here, we have a half day on Tuesday, the 23rd, so we're still coming to school that week and have a half day on the 23rd and we come back on Tuesday, the 2nd. So please have a safe and wonderful holiday season, whatever your family celebrates. No. Oh my God, come on, I looked at our calendar.
First of all, don't shorten our break. Second of all, the second is not a Tuesday. I believe the date.
I really looked at that calendar well.
Monday, January 5th.
Thank you, Monday, okay, so let me repeat that all over again. We do have, we go to school and we have a half day on Tuesday, the 23rd, and we come back on the 5th of January.
Which is a Monday.
Which is a Monday. Thank you. Sorry about that. I looked at our school calendar. Maybe that was a typo, never mind. All right, we have no unfinished business. We have no new business and committees' reports should continue to be short tonight because only two committees have met. Curriculum, can you give us a quick update on when your meeting is? This week, right?
So that meeting is going to be December 18th at 5:00 PM in room 213 of the Town Hall.
Thank you. And Finance and Budget Committee.
Yes. So the Finance Committee met on December 1st. We reviewed the report thoroughly, walking through each account line and asking questions to ensure that we had full clarity on all of the information presented. Something that Steve and Lorena have done, and I, Steve mentioned it here tonight, talking about his audit report, was they have now included clearly in red actually the budget offsets in the reports. So it shows the grants and the revenues coming into the district, which is helping to improve budget transparency. So thank you, Mr. Macchio and Mrs. Sisarnos for your patience in addressing all of our questions. That night, we had lots of them, so we appreciate the time and energy that went into planning for that and also answering our questions. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 5th and we will begin preparations for the 2026-2027 budget at that time.
Thank you, Kelsey, for that thorough report. I was going to, I had to thank Steve and Lorena for their patience as notes for mine as well. Just for the audience folks, it is a whole new Finance and Budget Subcommittee and even myself did not participate on that Subcommittee when I was on the board, thanks to fulfill continuing to support as an alternate he clued in to. But just think that, thank you for the leadership in that Subcommittee and getting our Subcommittee started. Policy.
The next policy meeting is Tuesday, December 16th at 5:30 PM in room 215.
Thank you, Ms. Burkulio. And Leadership, we met last week and those have pretty consistent agendas as well. We reviewed our agenda for this evening. We had our introductory conversation around our budget planning for next year. We also have been having some across the dais conversations around reporting and information and data that's shared with us as a board and we are working on some streamline expectations around what does that look like? How do we get information that we need and use it in decision-making? It was mentioned Ms. Kushman had asked for some additional feedback from our students, which we're now getting in our monthly, our weekly update. We had some lively discussion about special ed and some continued next steps there and how we continue to support wellness. Later in our agenda tonight, we will be adapting a new way that we approve certifications of expenditures and grants. This was a bipartisan effort around monetary, around how we can be more efficient in our meetings, but still abide by our bylaws and needs. So you will notice that now in our packets, the certifications are listed publicly, so we will not do a full reading and we're just going to reference those in our packets. Talented and Gifted was also brought up, so that will continue to be examined through our Subcommittee's. We're also continuing conversations about how we make our academic programs more readily available, our strategic plan, things like that. I do just want to share publicly that after the leadership meeting, I did reach out to Mayor Sikala to outline our budget timeline and ensure that town counselors are informed and have access to our process. So we are working, that was kind of demonstrated this morning, it felt like this morning, earlier this evening, with Matt and Steve regarding kind of continued communication. We are going to continue to do that through our role as elected officials as well. So that is our board committee reports, liaison reports. Any school folks have updates? Ms. Keiner.
From the Principal of Prudence Crandall, on Wednesday, our students will be lining up on Brainerd Road to cheer on the Wreaths Across America convoy as it makes its meaningful journey from Maine to Arlington National Cemetery. In the classroom, students will be learning about the importance of this day and reflecting on the honor and remembrance it represents. The PTO will be selling Hartford Wolf Pack tickets for the game on January 24th. If your family would like to join in on a fun night out, please remember that the deadline to place your order is January 9th. For all the details, be sure to check the flyer included in this week's newsletter. And our giving trees are up. We will continue to collect hats, scarves, mittens, socks and earmuffs to be donated to families in need. Your generosity helps bring warmth and joy to those in our community. Thank you in advance for your support. And finally, he wishes all a happy and safe holiday season.
Thank you, Ms. Keiner. Mr. Ryder.
So Parkman, I am happy to announce that they made it and we did over 2,000 pounds of food, so Mr. Kay will be shaving his beard at the next assembly on December 12th at 9:45 AM. And of course, make sure that you guys are in your PJs. Family Bingo Night is December 11th at 6:00 PM. The book fair will also be open starting at 4:30 PM, so make sure that you go ahead, bring your parents and their money. And the PTO's next meeting is on January 13th and the time and the place is to be determined.
Thank you. Ms. Burkulio.
At Barnard, they are celebrating 12 Days Before Winter Break Spirit Days, starting tomorrow in honor of Wreaths Across America Day. You are invited to wear red, white and blue. And I think my favorite is Grinch Day on December 16th. You get to wear green and it ends on December 23rd, which was mentioned as an early release day at 12:20. You get to wear your coziest clothes, which is super fun, so you can look at online for each of those themed days. I also just wanted to mention on behalf of the Enfield Cultural and Arts Commission that we have two events coming up. The first one is this Saturday at 9:30 at the library. It's a drop-in session for Build a Tree, a family event where you can use materials that are provided or bring your own and create a tree for the annual gallery. And then the Festival of Trees with a Storytime with special guests Anna and Elsa will be on Thursday, December 18th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Burkulio. I said you didn't need to announce all of the Spirit Days and you did a great job of somehow sneaking them in there. That was great, very creative. Any other school reports? Nope. Ms. McGuire Bruce.
Just real quick, I'm looking forward to attending the holiday evening at Enfield Street School tomorrow night. That event is from 5:30 to 7:30. There will be crafts, treats and even a Santa visit. Families who bring an item to donate to the Enfield Food Shelf Boat will also be entered into a raffle for a pass to Bright Knight. So don't forget your food for the food shelf.
All right, Ms. Kushman.
I know it was recently noted, my voice, I'm sorry, how significant it is when families come to schools for their children. And so Eli Whitney is having opportunities for their families to come with the children on December 17th at 9 for the 4th graders and then on December 22nd for the 3rd and 5th graders. So just really want to encourage families to take advantage of that opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kushman. Make sure you're all right over there. Two updates for me. One is from Hazardville. They will be participating in Wreaths Across America, obviously, and Pyjama Day. And starting on Monday, the 15th, they are also participating in a Hello Winter Spirit Week that will continue until the start of winter break on the 23rd. Please check out your Husky Howl Parent Square Newsletter to make sure you know all of those great days and all of that great stuff. Parent Square, make sure you got Parent Square. I also want to share that Enfield High School had a very successful Safe Grad. I thank our board for contributing a basket there, sorry, the jingle jam for the Safe Grad, thank you. Thank you to all those who donated and supported. It was lots of fun and a great cause and over $24,000 was collected to support that accessible event for all students to have a safe graduation experience. So thank you to all of those who participated. Joint Facilities.
Yep, sorry, I have one more update. I forgot about Kite. I forgot it. I'm so sorry. So this, this month, Kite is running their holiday de-stress campaign, so make sure to take, check out the Facebook page. They have videos and a lot of different things to help with de-stress parents. Caitlin Fernando, yeah, Caitlin Fernando, welcome her to the Kite team as our parent ambassador. They are still taking applications, so please make sure that you check out their website so you can apply. Kelsey, you'll like this one. Play Lab update. They are having an event for the high school students that are enrolled in the Early Childhood Program. They will be planning to put together play packs and pilot them with some of the different groups of kids. That will actually happen on March 4th. Kite's next meeting is January 7th at 5:30 PM. They will be planning to put together play packs and pilot them with some of the different groups of kids. That will actually happen on March 4. Kite's next meeting is January 7 at 5:30 PM. Please reach out to Hannah Song if you would like more information or you would like to attend. The Enfield Food Shelf Lunch Link is happening on December 29. It is one day during the break, 11:00 AM to noon at the food shelf location. And then, just a plug for first readers, is they are hosting their Trivia Night. That is happening on February 28 at 6:00 PM, but tickets go on sale January 1. This is their one and only event that they fundraise for, so please make sure that you attend in some sort of way if you can. It's a lot of fun. There is not a current theme this year for the trivia, but it's supposed to be a blast. And then, just one last thing, because my son is part of it and I want to make sure it gets recognized. Lego League is happening. It's their first Lego League showcase. It's happening this weekend on December 13 at 9:00 AM. That is happening at JFK. They're doing their whole little presentation of the robots that they made for, out of Legos, so enjoy that.
Thank you, Ms. Gerard. You're allowed to go back on the mic. For the next joint committees, I think I'm going to take a stab at just giving the dates because they have not met since our last meeting, so Joint Facilities, I believe, is meeting Thursday, the 11th. Joint Insurance, we do not have a date yet for that meeting, so that is to be determined. Joint Security is meeting on Friday, the 12th, and our prereq committee will have a meeting tomorrow, but really, the update there is that community conversation that Ms. McGuire-Bruce mentioned earlier, that is virtual on Wednesday, the 17th. Please consider any, any and all residents. Yes, we, that is, I think the information is posted on our website, underscore Modernization. I'll make sure that there is a parent, typically, I'm looking at Leslie, a great Parent Square can go out with that update, and it has been sent, so we can make sure that is available in Parent Square. Awesome. That's our Liaison Reports. Approval of Minutes, do I have a motion to approve our regular Board of Ed meeting minutes for November 25, 2025? Motion. So moved by Ms. Gerard.
Second.
Second by Ms. Keiner. Any discussion? All right, show of hands. That looks like nine in favor, zero against. Thank you, everybody. And now, we're going to do our adjusted approval of accounts and payroll.
First of all, let me just say thank you, because I don't have to read that, so this is great. I'm going to make a motion to approve the certification of expenditures for October of 2025.
I will second that.
This is, any discussion? Hand vote for this as well? Awesome, all in favor of approving expenditures for October 2025. Nine in favors, zero against.
Okay, me again. I'm going to make a motion to approve the certification of expenditures for November of 2025.
Second.
Any discussion?
Practiced.
Awesome. All in favor? Nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the certification of grants and Head Start expenditures for the month of October 2025.
Second it.
Any discussion? Awesome, all in favor? Nine in favor, zero against.
One more time. I'm going to make a motion to approve the certification of grants and Head Start expenditures for the month of November 2025.
And a second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Nine in favor, zero against. Woohoo, we did it! We just saved three minutes after an already long meeting.
Longer for my first time.
I do not believe we have any official correspondence or communications. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved by Mr. Coburn.
Second.
Second by Ms. McGuire-Bruce. All in favor? That looks like that is nine in favor and zero against as well. Happy holidays.